What did you put on?
There's a Barbara Lawrie opinion.
We'll call the December 14th and Lock Haven City Council to take rise from over the sun, followed by the plaid.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the November 24th regular meetings.
I have approval. I'll second.
Motion, floor, and second questions or comments on the money. Call for the voting.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Public comments, the comments from city residents or city taxpayers.
Okay. Yeah. Public hearing on the post 2026 budget. Purpose of the hearing is to afford the public an opportunity to comment and make observations on the recommended budget. We're gonna go with comments from public safety agencies and organizations in the city. First, the airport.
I'll kick off the airport. Airport has approximately 2,000 landings and takeoffs a year, but according to tracking that Doug does, about seventeen percent of the airport's expenses are spent on wages, six percent on benefits. Sixty percent of the airport's overall expenses are actually paid for debt service for improvements that have taken place at the airport. This year, the city was fortunate to get Infrastructure Investment and Job Act receipts for grants and $142,000 towards the new self-fueling station and another $200,000 towards the rehabilitation of the access road and visitor parking area. The city also is receiving a grant for ninety percent of the total cost of installing a fence to ensure security between the airports through defense entities and the city-owned property. And that project, like the others, has either been accomplished or is starting. The city's share for these local projects comes from the 2021 Series B note. And after those projects are completed, there will still be a small amount of money left in the airport capital projects fund from that borrowing done by the city. Doug Wanker, who is the airport manager, is here this evening. And we have provided you with a balanced budget for the airport for next year. And in part, that is due to some purchases Doug made in aviation fuel this year that likely won't have to be made next year.
Would you like a comment?
I'll just give you a brief rundown. Of course, everybody knows paving is completed. So I'll start you in it. That's an ongoing project. I wish they'd give you a better answer on when the completion date is, but we have no idea. They're waiting on a dispensing unit for that. It was supposed to be beginning of November, then moved to the end of November. There we are past that, so don't know. Five months, that seems a little long for a simple project. State was just in this month and we need to meter calibration and certification checks. So we're good to go there. Anytime the DOA be in contact, it's usually this month setting up inspection for the airport. They had several calls over the last couple of months with the UPA. And they are in the process of issuing a new instrument approach for Lock Haven. The current one we have now is non-precision. This would be an LPV precision approach, which would lower the minimums and visibility requirements to get in. So that'll be a great add-on. So it uses GPS instead of the ground-based equipment. They're phasing all that out, so GPS. And this should be on track. That should be, he said about 27 or 28 a year that happens. So it's not gonna happen overnight, but throughout the road, that's what we're gonna do.
Good. Any questions?
We'll add one.
Oh, go ahead.
Because we will probably be asked by some people, we all know well, do we anticipate that we have enough fuel based on what we currently have that we don't purchase any next year? Is that? Is that how I'm, am I reading the budget correctly?
Jet fuel, that's absolutely true.
Okay.
And again, if we had a contractor come in who needed more jet fuel.
We'd buy more.
Doug has arranged with them in the past to buy what is in addition that the contractor needs. He didn't purchase half gas and he does have enough to fill the new self-fuel system when that's online. So we have not budgeted because we do have enough on hand right now. If it did become an issue, it would because of, because of higher usage at the airport, which would be higher income.
Great, okay. Want to put that out publicly so everyone knows we asked that question.
Something you want to add?
Of course, we've all talked about solar field for several years. I do have an update from Tangents on the solar field. Currently, they are implementing an inverter change for the system with PP and L to better comply with new federal regulations around tax credits. And the design change is just a one-to-one technology swap. It doesn't really complicate things. It's just that it needs approval through PP and L, which they're waiting for now. Once they have the PP and L, okay, then they will close with their long-term financial partner. And when the closing is complete, they'll be able to get the building permit issued, which has already been under review. And the plan for Tangent is to begin construction late winter, early spring of 2026. And their intention is for the project to be online and producing power by the end of 2026. So just moving along, it's been behind the scenes, probably emails a week for two years, but it has been moving. It's just, it's slow going.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Sir, first, sir. Anything else on the airport? Minority economic development.
Community and economic development. Major projects here are spearheaded by the comprehensive plan and then implemented with planning and grant funding. They have had an impact on the quality of life of Lock Haven and the results are showing. As stated on page 12 in your budget book, the median household income can now afford the median rent. Median household income is up 71% from a decade ago. And the median home value has 39, or has increased 39% over the same decade. And so this is really good news for the city. And the Brookings Institute, which is quoted again on page 12, does, has found in their studies that the quality of life and quality of places attributes are attributes that make a community an enticing and attractive place, help drive better economic opportunity for the residents of the city. In the past, I would say five years, the major changes in construction that we've seen within the city limits, those are now within the top 10 taxable properties within the city limits. So it has had a really positive economic impact on the city whenever new development does take place. And a lot of that takes place because of the quality of life that can be afforded to people who choose to live here. So we'll start with culture and recreation, which is community life.
So this year of my accomplishments, we've had 15 concerts for the summer content series. So it wasn't an increase in the number of concerts, but I would say that this was our best attendance since the pandemic. We've been growing gradually every year. Hopefully, we will continue to see that grow and focus on all the awesome bands that we've been bringing in and bringing people from other areas as well. We've worked with the city planner for the Hooverman Park improvements, the Drift on the Road murals for the active art corridor, including community surveys, surveys and outreach events. And then just continue to work with different community organizations for all of their use requests and community events. Continue to increase public outreach by adding to the Ranger Passport Program, our monthly walk with council, our monthly newsletters, social media campaigns, as well as our Ranger videos. And so hoping to continue to do that in New Year as well and maybe add a few more programs, get the community to understand what all we do here in the city. A big one that was probably from the beginning of the year through May, worked with Infodap and Loop to develop our new website. And then that will directly impact our sustainability. So that kind of put us back at one for getting our sustainability certification because we have a whole new website, new links and all of that. So working on that for the next, for this new year. And then we did see an increase in our recycling. So continue to work with our social media campaigns, newsletter, ads on the radio to see those numbers come up. And then I also this year became CPSI certified and inspected our city parks, which you all have seen the results of that. And then looking into 2026, I started talking a little bit about some of those goals. But I'd love to work with our local trail groups as we continue our discussions with Zindel Park and a lot of opportunities there. Continue to work on our summer concert series, hopefully bring back the movie series. We are still trying to find some sponsorships with that. So I have some more portrait ones I'm gonna look into just to bring that back and maybe work with downtown Lock Haven and other organizations to focus. Continue with our public education with Ranger program, community events, promoting sustainability and recycling. Maybe working on some native plantings as well. And then just continuing with recycling and sustainable opportunities as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Casey? You answered all the questions. Good report.
You were gonna be real hard.
I know.
Saving it for Abby.
Yeah.
Saving it for Carter. Answer on the corner.
It's all built up. He's got a little loose before he goes.
Yeah.
So moving on, next to economic development and planning.
If you turn to beginning on page 48, just the top of page 49, it's actually the Economic Development Department. The next portion of the page is actually the end of the general budget and the capital reserve fund. So we're just talking about the top third of the page at this moment. But I'll turn it over to city planner and development coordinator, Abby Roberts.
Thank you, Greg. So just some accomplishments that we have had this year applied for just under three million in grant funding to support community development and infrastructure with the budget impacts. We haven't had a fair amount of that awarded yet. We're still waiting on some contracts and like, for example, DCNR hasn't made awards yet. So there's still some things that we're waiting for. We adopted an active transportation plan, like in Lock Haven, and continued to implement those initiatives such as the active arts corridor. As Casey mentioned, we completed two murals this year with Drift Down Productions and one of, they've got a lot of attention. Which is really great. So we're just looking to continue that development. One of the grants that was, again, not contracted, but with the budget, we received $25,000 for four years for PA Council on Arts through the Creative Communities Initiative for the active arts corridor project. So that's a total of $100,000 spread out over those years just to continue those, the arts and the aspects of it. And we're looking to get other funding sources to do the infrastructure parts as well. So we'll mix those together to really spread apart, spread the impact and everything. The, we completed the three-year campus check-in, which was something from the Destination Lock Haven Comprehensive Plan. That was one of the future actions and it was really great to get that completed. Shows that the plan's not just sitting on the shelf and we really connected with the university and got to know them a little better on where their stances are, especially the students. Public Works collaborated with them for Sunset Pines. Carter will talk more about that, as well as the traffic signals. And I continue to work with USDA, Department of Commerce and city staff for the Lock Haven Police Building. And again, construction will start in 2026. So in addition to the active transportation plan and the campus check-in, we started the zoning and SADO update, which has been going great. That should be done in front of you for consideration. Then next year, I think we're looking at June or July for those. And then connected to the comprehensive plan, I have in front of you all the accomplishments for this year from all the departments compiled into one document. We have been doing this ever year since the plan was adopted and they are uploaded to the city civil space page under the comprehensive plan project page. This year, we've completed 78 goals, action items or future actions in 2025. So some of them, the actions create, like, accomplish two goals. We still count them. For example, the zoning ordinance has a lot of things to mention against the comprehensive plan goals, so we like to count them. That's what it's there for. Let me see, the CDVG, earlier this year, we have contracted out the administration of CDVG to Cetacog, which has been going great. We are completed, finished the Hooverman Park project. Just with the springtime finishing up some things, but they have been taking over the admin for that and prepping for next year. Another one of your handouts was the recent years of CDVG broken down. You'll see that 2023 on hasn't had much movement, but they will next year. Really focused on Hooverman Park, clearing that out. But next year, we're focused on the public tree, public restrooms on Main Street. The zoning and SADO update is moving. The 2-on-1 helpline support, we're working on that, which will just be a payout to a community partner. We'll have paving on Spring and Stone and Hannah Park improvements, depending on what we hear back from DCNR, may get started next year or might go into 2027. So there will be a lot of movement next week and you'll start seeing numbers for those reimbursements, start seeing things pop up and so. And. And I'll introduce Carter. Carter is our project manager, has been managing a lot of projects.
Fantastic. I have a big list of projects here, things that we did in 2025 and then some upcoming projects in 2026. I'm gonna run through them. If you guys have any questions on anything, just let me know. In 2025, for our big projects, we did Hooverman Park Phases 1 and 2. We did Sunset Pines Phase 3A and the Green Light Go Traffic Signals, which is Belfon Ave, Bartlett Street, the second Ave. For some smaller projects, we closed out the Tiger Park project. We did the Ross Library HVAC replacement. Closed the wells on, in the Church Street lot in preparation for the police building. The Hooverman Park concessions building is receiving new siding and new roofing. And the Logan Street curb alteration at Hooverman Park area. As well as our ongoing programs such as the Main Street benches and Historic Advisory Committee. Upcoming projects in 2026, we have the police building, the Main Street restrooms, Ray Street paving, Spring Street and Stone Alley. 2026 patch paving and then the Youngdale Well Field project.
So a lot going on.
Yeah.
We do have some objectives for 2026, which, um, we don't, create, create an inventory of existing property, road and infrastructure in the city. Carter has been working with Violytics and Public Works with that. And we're just going to see if we can get an exterior property index going as well. So we can kind of pinpoint areas that we want to focus on, especially with the redevelopment authority or the historic advisory committee or things like that. Continue with the active arts corridor, support construction of the Lock Haven Police Building and other funding for the Police Department. Explore solutions and alternatives for downtown street scape areas. You heard Kyle Dale talk about the lakes and everything. So that's on our table of funding for that and how we can improve those areas. And then continue to improve and expand recreational opportunities in the city. We are, we are investing a lot in parks over the past couple of years, but I think it's being realized in how nice our parks are. When you compare the newer ones to an older one that used to look good and now it looks really bad. So we have to continue investing. And as I mentioned, Hannah Park is up next, so. That's all we have. And happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council?
I, I have a question that may not have anything to do with your projects, but I don't know where it does go. So when PennDOT redid the lighting on, on Paul Mac Boulevard coming into town and when they did that, there is a light on Walnut Street under on the underpass of Walnut Street that never was replaced. And it's been dark there. It's really dark there. Now, that may make it good for people that are in the summertime sleeping up at the top of that, or up underneath that bridge, which I've stumbled onto a couple of times. But, but I think, you know, there needs to be some communication with PennDOT asking them if that's ours or theirs. Because I'm not really sure whose it is. It might be ours.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, we will. That, I appreciate that.
Because that would be part of the agreement that we talked about when Kyle Dale was here. Fund 25, which is the lighting expenses for the county, city and PennDOT through that shared agreement. That would be a project out of that fund. And so that would be reimbursable.
Any other questions? I have a question or you're gonna suggest. We talked about the benches and they're, they're popular. One of the things that has come up, I don't know if anyone else, is that people like to, people, many people read, like to throw garbage down and around. Is there any way that we can do something to curb that? I, I know that when, before there were benches and the trees were first put in, they'd put those tree grates, you'd break out, you know, as the tree grew bigger, could we do fashion something, maybe wood, that goes around the tree and blocks them from doing that, that we could adjust as the tree grows bigger in there?
Yeah, that was a thought. Another thing that, that might, that I thought of is maybe building a trash can in between there, not the boy around the tree, but within. Because another thing we're lacking is trash cans downtown. So that people are just looking for a place to throw their coffee cup when they're walking too far with it. So maybe we can mix those together and that also opens up some sidewalk space for us as well. But of course, my first thing would be, please don't litter and throw yourself in there. But yeah,
Sure.
It's something that we've recognized. Definitely wasn't the intent of those benches. But we do want to keep it free enough for the tree to grow. It's something we've been thinking about.
We're thinking, I was saying a line to the, with the recent holiday parade, there were complaints about garbage. Whose responsibility is that? My first thought was people that drop it. They're human, but.
Like doggy bags could be a mix on that as well. Like we could use the benches, the square of them to be access points for those things that our residents use or should use daily.
Well, yeah, just I wanted to make sure it's on the radar. I don't know how many, I mean, because we have somebody collect that garbage, how we could make that work with whoever's collecting. I mean, a contractor, not like our staff. They come down and empty the garbage can. So how would we work that into that? Or I guess it's, it's food for thought. You guys can work that out.
Carter already drew it, so it's, we're, it's in progress.
So we've cleaned them out a couple of times.
Yeah.
Pick the litter. We had the volunteers that needed extra hours, so we did that a few times on Main Street. Weren't they supposed to, like, after the holidays, get removed for like a couple of months so that it was easier to clean the streets and the sidewalks? Because when we do street clean up, they're gonna be in the way.
Yeah.
And then it would be stored and then put back out or.
Yeah, I haven't connected with Public Works on when they will be removed. I know that was something that they wanted to do for someone in the bowl. We'll, we'll check in online.
Also, it can help last longer. I would think if it's not, they're not exposed to the winter.
They will be stained next, in the spring, maybe over the winter when we remove them. So that will be an added bonus. They dried out enough, so we'll get them stained and look a little nicer.
Later project.
For anyone interested, it takes 28 minutes to pick up the trash from every one of the benches downtown. And it comes to about two tall kitchen garbage bags. So if anyone wants to volunteer to do that and take that 28 minutes, you can go bench to bench, pick that up. And feel free to even use little kitchen bags and put those into the trash cans that are downtown.
Yeah. Any other questions for? Thank you. Appreciate it. That's everything for the budget, correct? We have a commercial loan, yes. With Barbara Holden.
Yeah, so the commercial loan committee met last week to discuss a commercial loan application submitted by Hi, Barbara Holden, LLC, in the amount of $50,000. We used to purchase a commercial building at 307 Belfon Avenue. They approved the loan, recommended approval of the loan. And that amount turned over seven years at a 3% interest rate. The loan was approved with a second lien mortgage on the business property for collateral to secure the loan. So after approval, the city council will move forward with the loan closing with the business owner and the city solicitor and hopefully get that done by the end of the year. Get that business in there in your home.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion, floor, and a second. Anyone have any questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. I didn't ask a question during the process because it has no bearing in the vote. Where's the most?
It's right next to me. It's the Billy Nick's Avenue that has.
Between the.
He used to be. Yeah. And I believe in Bellish, just moving up there, right? Yes.
Thank you. I was struggling with. Okay, so comments from residents of attendance. We kind of had a word there, aren't we? Because the loan wasn't part of the budget.
Well, it seemed thematic.
Okay. So we don't have any comments in council on, on the budget. And there's really no one here in the public other than councilmember White. Do you have any comments? All right, thank you. Out on the public hearing, unfinished business 6A, consideration ordinance number 2025-10.
This is amending chapter 99, Article 1, Police Pension Fund and Article 3, Death Benefits for Retired Police, to align with the agreement between the Lock Haven Police Officers Association and the city, which takes effect January, verse 2026.
Do you have a motion?
I have approval.
Second. Motion, floor, and a second question or comments. This is all part of what we negotiated during the contract, correct?
Correct. So the police officers will now contribute 2%, which is different than what's in the old ordinance. There's lines for that. We also pay separate fees for having the police death benefit fund. So instead, the agreement was to round that as an additional benefit into the police pension fund, which eliminates the fees for having that third pension fund. So that'll save the city some, some money.
All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Consideration of ordinance number 2025-11. This is the second reading unchanged from the original reading on 11/24.
Uh, this is the second reading unchanged from the original reading on eleven-twenty-four. This provides three point seven percent, uh, wage increase for regular employees and four percent for, uh, employees who are clerks for twenty-twenty-six. The, um, exhibit B that's included is really just informational. There is an error on there though, which will be corrected before the exhibit is finalized. And that is patrol step two, um, should be three percent more than the twenty-twenty-five wage, not significantly less than. Uh, but the ABME employees are at three point seven percent, uh, wage increase, which they've been informed about. Uh, their agreement, which ends in twenty-twenty-six with the city, was that their percent rate, wage increase would be the percent of total taxable real estate value increase for the year twenty-six. So, uh, that came in at three point seven percent or about ten million dollars in additional real estate value for the year.
What's the wish count?
I have a proposal.
Second. Motion for floor and second, any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, Greg, at the bottom of exhibit A, there temp level three is that, and that app layer doesn't have a percentage, but it goes up a dollar.
Uh, it just goes up a dollar.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have a percent total increase. It's a little less better with the sixteen, fifteen, fourteen.
It does look better, just because everything else didn't go up, didn't have any percentage at all. More like seven, fifteen.
Error for three hundred and twenty out.
Name. Okay, call for the votes.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. Any other unfinished business?
I know, Your Honor.
New business, seven A, notice of semi-annual distribution of the city's share of state police fines.
Uh, when the state police issue a fine within the city limits, the city does get a share of that because it does have a full-time police force. Um, the share for the December first payment will be one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents. That's just, so that's shown in the budget. The next item is just for council's information and the public's information. It is changes to Comcast price adjustments, which by the franchise agreement must be provided to city council. Um, so that, uh, they are able to review those in case the public were to ask any questions.
Do we have any questions on any of that? All right. Do we have any other new business?
I know, Your Honor.
Okay, we have the F Y reports. Um, this is the recreation authority meeting. Does anybody have anything from their own committees they'd like to bring up tonight?
The library has hired a new executive director. I do not, I do not know if it's starting yet. He is relocated until Lock Haven, but, um, I'm just assuming sometime in the year.
We may.
Uh, Severio, and I've forgotten his last name. He doesn't, like, a month ago. Um, so lovely, lovely human. He worked in New York's, um, library system for a very long time, running their children's library. A small, um, system up in upstate. And then he has been down in Texas for the last several years, running some libraries in, uh, uh, Fort Worth area, I believe. So he'll, he'll be a really great addition. He grew up, um, coming into this area. His family is, um, from the Clearfield area. But he grew up in Long Island and visited here every summer to visit his family. So he's really looking forward to being a central P A.
Anything else? Do I have a motion, Your Honor?
Uh, motion, I don't know.